...the order.
Commissioner Meeks?
Here, here.
Mr. Mano?
Here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices. And the public count.
Um, we'll just need someone to... ...bring in Bruce to illustrate some of the information. Yeah, I think it's, you know, before we continue, I think it should be important to say that Keith White is unable to attend tonight due to work commitments with all the storms and damage. He's, uh, he's very busy. And Dan Statman had previously said that was not going to be able to attend this meeting as, as early as last week. So, everyone know? So, why don't I just go with the first item under Administration and Finance Committee? It is the museum agreement. So, you know, back in, um, July of last year, we redid the museum agreement with the Historical Society in, in that it was really a little bit more detailed than what we've had in the past. It really lined out exactly what the Historical Society was going to be responsible for, what the park district was responsible for. And we've been operating, um, really well with the Historical Society. And, um, when we were approaching probably October, uh, November of last year, uh, we were in talks with the Historical Society about ways to cut some costs. And they suggested that they close the first 10 weeks of the year, um, which would really work out well for them because with all the snow and salt and all the other stuff that's getting into the, the house, they thought it would be a great opportunity for, for them to just kind of shut down and that in turn would help us save on payroll costs. Well, at the time, we had an assistant curator and a curator. We were going to move the curator from over at the Education Center to the main office here at Prairie View so that she could work on other projects and just, you know, pay her out of a different budget but kind of keep her working. Well, the, and, and just not have anything for the assistant to do. Well, um, the assistant, she just decided to quit, uh, to focus more for, um, opportunity with other, uh, with another museum. And the curator decided to leave as well. So, we were, you know, first 10 weeks, we were shut down. We had, uh, not, didn't have two employees. So, we had an opportunity to talk to the Historical Society about how we wanted to arrange staff. In the past, what they have done was, uh, we advertised for the position. They would help us select someone. We'd hire them. That person would go over to the Education Center and do exhibits and things like that. Uh, and the Historical Society didn't really have any play in supervision of that employee or, uh, kind of being able to direct them to do certain things. So, uh, we thought maybe it would be a great opportunity to, um, switch the roles, whereas they would hire somebody and we would pay them to, um, staff the museum. Well, they, um, decided that that would be a pretty good idea. They were going to use independent contractors, um, and, and, you know, through discussion, we've been talking to the, our attorney, we decided that that really wasn't a, a good idea because it really, then, the way they were going to use these individuals really didn't meet the definition of an independent contractor. So, what we're going to do is, we're going to hire the individual with their assistance. Um, then we will, you know, move them, put the, uh, individual over at the museum. Um, and they would do, uh, strict supervision of that person 100%. Now, um, they're also not going to be a museum curator. They're going to be sort of like a museum, uh, attendant, more of a frontline employee who will answer the phones, be there to talk about the exhibits, but not handle or design the exhibits. Uh, 'cause I'm not sure if everyone knows that we own the house, uh, but, um, all the artifacts within the house is owned by the Historical Society. So, anything that comes from the house or that's in the archives are actually the, the Historical Society. So, they're going to design the displays and things like that. We're going to pay for those individuals, um, up to $12,000 a year, which for us is a huge savings because we were spending about thirty-five thousand a year for the...
About thirty, about thirty on the curator and about twelve, fifteen on the...
So, forty-two. Yeah, so forty-two thousand. So, we're in, we're in the drop down. We're going to save $30,000 if we're able to do that. They're going to get better control over the individual, monitoring them, doing their, you know, handling their own exhibits and stuff. So, this agreement would reflect those changes.
Who becomes the curator?
Uh, they, they want to call them, uh, museum managers. Um, and since there are employees, we can't call them managers because that's actually sort of a step up, uh, from the rec supervisor. They're really more of a, an attendant, sort of museum attendant.
Our employee?
They would be, yeah. It would be our employee. They're, they would be supervising that, that individual.
And then this other position, that's something different. Twelve thousand dollars position.
No, we're, no, they're going to, they're going to have a, they're going to use part-time employees. They anticipate using two, um, and they know that they're not going to, to spend more than $12,000 a year on payroll costs.
On each of them or... Twelve thousand, both?
Yeah, completely. Yeah. And so it's a part-time employees. We don't have to worry about IMRF benefits or anything of, of that nature.
Is that going forward?
Any other questions? Move it forward. Okay. Um, next thing, um, is the adoption of national standards. Um, so, the Morgue Park District utilizes the Illinois Associate, uh, Illinois Parks and Recreation Association, um, for, uh, assisting with a number of different things. Uh, when we talked about, we, we go to the annual conference in January, so that's networking. Um, they provide guidance on, um, a variety of different topics. But there is also under the, they fall under the National Recreation and Park Association. And the, uh, NRPA develops, um, standards for community, or for park districts and, uh, conservation districts and, um, things of that nature. And during our March Aquatic Forum, um, I had mentioned something relating to, uh, standards and a gentleman in the crowd, um, was really kind of questioning i- if that was the right sort of standard. And what I'd like to do is adopt, um, the National Recreation and Park Association as the, sort of the official standard of the Morgue Grove Park District. So, this will give us, uh, not, you know, a set of standards to follow. You can, will let the community know that these are the standards that we follow. Really, it will provide us, um, consistency and, uh, it really does prevent, um, our ability and others to sort of cherry pick what sort of standards they want to use. You know, 'cause, you know, you can find pretty much any kind of standard to kind of sway one way or the other. Um, but if we are adhered to one set of, um, or one, one providers of, uh, standards, then we should do that. So, I had asked, um, our legal counsel just to draft up a really quick, um, sort of policy statement and that is attached. So, what we would do if adopted, we would put that as part of the general practice manual. That just says that, um, that as a, as board, we're going to prioritize, we will, um, adhere to the National Recreation and Park Association's standards. Any questions? Move it forward. Okay. Next is the 2017, 2022 Strategic Plan Update. So, this is actually, uh, sort of mid-year point because, uh, we were going to start this at the beginning of the fiscal year. So, this would be like either the first, but we've actually been working on this for a couple of months prior or so. It really is sort of a midpoint of the year for this. So, um, the first thing that we, um, first slide here is enhancing resident experience at facilities and parks. And we've completed all the, the, all the objectives that fall, uh, within the feasibility, uh, for, the feasibility study for the dog park. We've kind of, we wrapped that up and, uh, kind of moving on. And it will, like I say, August 12th is our dog, the bark in the park out here. So, if people are interested in bringing their dogs to the park, uh, we're going to have a little, um, party for pet owners. So, some of the things that are in progress, progress, you know, right now, we're identifying exploring the options for, uh, Harpool. Uh, part of that is coming up with a five-year operational budget. You know, at this point, we're sort of operating it, um, as long as possible until we get the report back, kind of figure out where, where we are with that. Um, we need to figure out what is the condition of the facility and that will be part of that report that will be presented to the board on July 19th. We need to acquire indoor space, which we have, um, done through the assistance of District Seventy. We, uh, worked with the superintendent over there to, uh, they'll develop a, a survey that was sent out to, uh, our parents so that we can get an idea of what kind of programming, programming that they would like to do over there. Um, and we have included five programs for the fall. Um, and, uh, continue to look for ways to, uh, make sure that we have some space. We're looking at other opportunities as well, so. Um, it's a develop a citizens group for capital projects. Uh, you know, one of the things that, this kind of really falls into the, the HR, uh, system, excuse me, the HR, HR report. Um, and an organizational review of the Parks Department, which, um, Keith is currently, uh, looking into as well. So, this is again, his summer of observation, just making sure, you know, see how we do things, how we can improve upon things and then looking to come to split that organization. Um, and I, and, you know, and, no, yeah. So, improving communication, marketing, customer-friendly processes, uh, you know, one of the things I'm really pushing, uh, Joe and Pete, uh, also pushing onto the rec supervisors, uh, collect and analyze feedback for, to improve operations. We have to continue to survey people to figure out what they like about the programs and events, what they dislike so that we can constantly evolve, um, constantly provide them what's, you know, a, a well, uh, organized and administered service.
Are people willing to do that? Or are we, like, pulling teeth to get some of that feedback?
Some of it is, it, it all depends. Um, what we've tried to do, at least with, uh, the superintendent of HR and her, uh, survey to, uh, customers about the new processes, um, was to incentivize them. So, hey, you know, fill out this and be eligible for, uh, you know, a potential, yeah. It's usually like 20% off of your next registration or, you know, something of that nature. Um, last fall, when we did the aquatic survey, we asked people, uh, we incentivized them by saying, you know, be eligible for, uh, 2017 family pool pass. You know, for us, you know, giving out a, a family, uh, pool pass, you know, it doesn't mean as much as the information that we're trying to gather. So, you know, for the $2 that we spend on it, it, the information is much more valuable. So, uh, increased effectiveness and efficiencies. We've internalized the, the website. We've streamlined the brochure, brochure process. Uh, Joe and Kathy work on reviewing marketing pieces. Um, we've replaced, we'll be replacing the front sign because we included that last, um, last month. Uh, and Kathy's done a really good job of working with the village to get information for our flot on posters and banners in strategic locations. She's got to do the little marquees by the, uh, the side of the road. Uh, she's, she's had it at the, at the entrances of, I believe, Dempster and Watkegan. So, she's, she's working really well with the village on that. Uh, strengthen community relations, relationships in park district governance. So, you know, we want to improve professional, uh, relationships through engagement. So, you know, um, you know, I participate, uh, work really closely with, uh, the village, the school districts, especially District Seventy. We have the administrators, uh, the village administrators meeting, which I talked to Ralph back in, I guess it was the fall of 2016. Uh, Mark and Dan really, uh, kind of pushed, making sure that I reached out and started something. And I talked to Ralph and Ralph thought that was a great idea and went, went with it and, uh, you know, started and everything. This coming year, I actually will be heading it, so I'm kind of excited for that. You know, whenever, um, we talk to the village, anytime that they need assistance, uh, we, we offer it up. You know, we're strengthening board competencies and engagement. Some of this stuff was pre-election, was the first election that I went through, probably like your second or, second one, third one, for Claudia. So, uh, it was quite an interesting experience. Uh, we've had some board members. I know Paul and Keith went to some, um, IAPD and the Illinois Association of Park District, uh, board member training sessions. I know Keith's really interested in doing, you know, some of that. So, when you're ready to come available and you're interested in doing that, please let us know so we can get you registered. Uh, you know, this past couple of months, you know, uh, with the state of Illinois and all the legislative things that have been coming through with that, also Nassau County, we make sure that, um, the commissioners know what, um, is coming down and what might be potentially, you know, rate hikes, property freezes, um, you know, all different kinds of things. We make sure that we keep you, uh, up to date. We did complete the distinguished agency accreditation, um, and we are updating intergovernmental agreements. Right now, we've just recently did an Historical Society one. We've done one for Morgue Grove Days. Uh, there are others, um, that we have that need to be looked at and, uh, we've, uh, visited, um, specifically the one I'm looking for, just to share services with the village, um, that we need, uh, to look at right now. We're the next one up. Uh, financial planning and long-term sustainability, um, under developing, update financial strategies. Uh, we've formalized the district's, uh, philosophy for the allocation of tax dollars at the scope of services, um, that will be coming, uh, soon. The annual review and update of long-term financial plans. We do that every, every year. Uh, we maintain the fund balance goals, um, that, that are set by the park district. We had to do some, uh, moving out some money a few months ago, um, to help that out, specifically, uh, $600,000 to the rec fund, um, that got moved somewhere else based on another board and moved it back where it actually, um, should be.
How often do we really do that?
What, review the, the goals? Yeah, but, um, we do it every budget year.
Do you do the long-term goals? Well, I guess just the fund balance goals in general?
Well, the fund balance goals are a policy we set that we follow up the GFOA, which is a 20, up to 20%, 25%. But, um, and we were dripping down, so we made transfers back, uh, about five, six years ago into the capital from other funds. And as it turned out, we didn't use them for a intended purpose because we had capital wanting to use it, so we moved it back.
But I guess, do we, we just look at it yearly, like religiously or like when we've noticed funds are short or...
Normally we would see, I mean, we're, there's a, there's a flow in the funds because when the taxes are coming to be collected, we're, our fund balance is straight, the month before it's going to be collected, it doesn't look so good. So, in the end, you're looking for the final, the final year end or, you know, just to, to know where you stand. You should be, we should know approximately, even though it may go to 5% sometimes, we know that there's big payoff coming out in the next month that will put us back where we need to be.
Right. And when we're audited every year, that's something that the auditors, you know, make sure that we, that, that address. Yeah, um, and then lastly, you know, just conduct training for staff on financial concepts. So, continue to do that through, um, sort of the budget process, so. Uh, enhance recreational opportunities to meet, um, residents' needs, uh, leverage metrics and research, optimize program mix. You know, that's, uh, something that Joe and rec staff, um, continue to do, um, continue to provide, uh, customer warranted recreational activities. The program evaluations are in there and really we want to maintain that financial stability and program offering. So, um, a lot of this, you know, we use it with contractors, we use, uh, employees and we're going to kind of figure out what's the best, um, way to provide that service in any opportunity. If it's a specialized thing that we can't, you know, type one go or, um, variety, it's really kind of a contractual service, but is there another opportunity to be, like, can we hire, you know, you know, uh, staff that have, or excuse me, individuals that have the knowledge, the knowledge to do like a basketball program, like a tots program or something like that, we can do that. Or, you know, we, we use, like, utilize hot shots a lot for some of those programs, but any kind of, any opportunity that we can move away from that, we're going to try to do that, so. So, any questions? Moving, moving along, um, we'd like to say that, you know, a lot of this stuff, some of the stuff that are, that's in here, um, is really tied to, um, the budget. You know, we are going to need mo, uh, funds to do, um, studies or to hire consultants because, you know, maybe without, sort of outside our, um, uh, wheelhouse. So, you know, that has some impact and when we don't have, uh, the ability to, you know, have those funds, you know, we're going to have to push it off and say, we already have to work on that full hanging fruit, that stuff that we know that we can do relatively easy with minimal cost.
So, no lawnmowers, usually whackers?
Well, yes. Okay. Any questions on the studio plan?
Moving along.
All right. Teaching permits. So, I have struggled with this every, this, every agency that I've been with. As I drive around and I see, you know, go past tennis courts and there is usually someone teaching the lesson. You know that they're teaching a lesson, you know, they're not part of our, our, our program. You can, you can see they have bucket baskets and baskets full of, of tennis balls and you, when you go and you approach them and say, hey, you can't teach a private lesson on the court. You have a specific policy, excuse me, specific policy in our general use, uh, regulations. It says that you cannot use park district property to, for a private, uh, uh, business. Okay, well, I go up to you and say, you can't teach private, I'm not, I'm not teaching a private lesson. I'm just, I'm just kind of helping a friend out. Okay? You don't see the exchange of money. You can't really say that they're teaching a, a private lesson. So, I thought maybe we could institute a teaching permit. So, anybody that, that goes on to a, a court, tennis court, basketball court, um, volleyball court for that guy and, um, is teaching a lesson or teaching somebody, uh, you know what, you gotta have a, you have to have a permit. So, this gives them an opportunity to legally do what, um, they're not supposed to do and it gives us an opportunity to say, well, I don't care if it's a private lesson or what. You're teaching a lesson, you need to have a teaching permit.
What kind of liabilities is that all the stuff in that condition? They get hurt, I mean, it's kind of ridiculous if they get hurt during the lesson. They become actors for whatever reason.
You, you mean like I'm saying, if they, someone broke their leg while doing a lesson? That, as long as it's not something within our, our courts, you know, let's say they, they stepped on crack, twisted their ankle, that might be with that, or be sort of anybody that comes up and uses it anyway. You know, we have to require that, that individual that is teaching the, the lesson to have the proper insurance to, to, you know, for coverage. So, if someone comes out there and says, uh, they're, they're teaching a lesson, or excuse me, do you want a private lesson? We ask them that. They say, you know, no, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not doing that. Someone gets hurt, still same kind of life that we do.
When I was reading through this, I...
Right.
I just want to make sure that...
So, I did run this by corporate counsel and they were like, yeah, I mean, you can do it. They, you know, put this out, kind of gave us an, an opportunity to do it. So, you know, you kind of, you, as you go around and you look at the courts and someone that's got, you know, three tennis balls and they're playing, it's not a big deal. Like, someone comes out there with 100 balls, it's like, there's a, there's an individual out that comes out to harry, he's got a pitching machine.
Yeah.
So, it's like, you know...
I don't know what attempted, uh, national, you know, I think. It was something I attempted a while, we asked some of the, a couple of chairs.
See, I haven't seen that one yet. So, yeah, I mean, there's, so what do we, what do we do? You know, be taking an opportunity to say, hey, you know, we, we have a policy, we need to put some teeth behind the policy and this is like, okay. Yeah, I, you, you may or may not be doing a private lesson, but you're teaching on court, you need to have a permit.
How we plan to market that? Get the order up?
Yeah, well, I would, uh, post on all, uh, courts that said, you know, new policy, teaching permit and, you know, give them an opportunity to, uh, decide if it's worth the, the expense to get the, uh, the permit or is it, you know, best to kind of move to the next one? Because this is what happens. I mean, it, wherever you go, you, you start enforcing the rules and they'll just go to another community that doesn't enforce the rules as, as much as the one that makes it slower. So, I mean, is it a, is it a, is it a problem? No. I mean, tennis isn't really, uh, maybe people still do it, obviously, but around, from what I can tell, there's, there's only a few times that I've seen people actually playing and it's not that, that big of a program for us, right? Because we go to Winnie City?
E-Town.
T-Town.
E-Town.
T-Town. E-Town. Sorry.
E-Town.
E-Town. So, it's not that big of a program. So, I mean, really. So, we're up to you guys. If you want to do it, guys want to do it, pray if you're not, it's like, it's okay too. It's just like, if someone does complain, hey, there's someone doing it, well, not much I can do because I have to actually see money exchanging or someone has to volunteer that, yes, I'm, I'm teaching a private lesson.
Right, it's a catch 22. I think you're going to upset a lot of people. And I think, on the other hand, people are taking advantage, right?
Yes. So, and, and not that this matters or anything, but it's, you know, you just come up here to Prairie View and, you know, there's, there's a lesson going on. You need to look at the cars and to look at the, the window stickers and very few of them that says more about... You know, you go up Niles and Evanston, you know, that's, they're just looking at the easy place to go.
Just have to take advantage of the task. Does, uh, that we're just going to stand in and put a certain...
Not a teaching permit that I'm sure. I mean, a lot of people just try to enforce this the best they can and move people out of there.
So, nobody else has, has this?
No. I, um, no.
What are the, uh, what's the downside of it?
What's? Well, I mean, it's the downside. The, the downside is, uh, a little bit of staff time to, to like post it and then go monitoring, you know, monitor those times, but that's the downside of not doing it as well. You still have to monitor. You know, the thing here is that we, we have specific times that we do park police and that's usually after four o'clock, or excuse me, after... after four o'clock, or, excuse me, after five o'clock on the week days, and a lot of these lessons are, you know, late morning, early afternoon, so you're kind of missing them.
So you're the dad that's out there teaching his kid with a bucket full of 50 balls, right? And you gotta walk up to him and be like, you know, can you teach your lesson, your permit? You know, it's just, I'm just saying, it's, it could create unnecessary friction, but, you know, I guess is the juice worth the squeeze, right?
What?
Is the juice worth the squeeze? So what I say is, is charging somebody, you know, money and paper, permit, worth the friction that we're going to get from the residents by looking like we're trying to cheap skate?
Right, that is something that you, you know, you're right to bring it up, because you're going to say, well, hey, I'm a More Grove resident, and if I want to use the tennis courts, and I want someone to come out and teach me a lesson, what's that of yours? That's my business. Yes, that's going to be an issue. You're going to have a, no, you're right, that's, that's a bucket of 50 balls, and is teaching a kid.
And he's got a 12, 13-year-old kid, you know, and you're like, hey, do you have a permit to teach here?
No, great questions, and that's, that's something that, well, I'm sorry, I know it's your kid, your child, but you still need to have the permit.
We don't have a problem now.
Well, there's people that are using the courts that are obviously teaching lessons that we, that we can't.
It's for people to take advantage of, that are the problem, spoiler alert.
You know, it's true, it's true, but, you know.
He's like, I get it, it's like you set, just got to set the rules.
Right, no, as I was just kind of going along last, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago, just thinking, well, what can we do about this? Because no matter where you go, you know, it doesn't matter if it's Vernon Hills, or Lake Forest, or Niles, or here, everybody deals with the same thing. You apply pressure and keep people off that aren't supposed to be on there, they're just going to move, you know, somewhere else, like I said before. But you're right, there's going to be repercussions to this, and you listed out, we talked about two, right? But it's up to you guys.
Is this something you can think about a little more?
Sure, you got a week. No, I'm sorry, if you want to table it for.
No, I mean, to next week, that's all. I just, you know, I'm just trying to think about it. And for me, and I was going to bring this up later, I, somebody came up to me over and was like, why did you close Oriole Pool? I work, you know, and just grabbed me on the street, and I'm like, talking to the board. My point is, you know, same thing with the dogs, with the dogs in the park, right?
Yeah.
So it's like, I'm just trying to think, you know, and I'm fine, and I've got thick skin, I can handle it, but I'm just thinking of adding more, more fuel, I guess, to talk.
Sure. Move next, something that you'll make decisions that are popular, and you'll make decisions that are, so. This is, you know, we don't have to decide now.
The way I feel, we should table it till the next, to really all those to the.
Okay.
Those are here.
Sounds great.
Especially.
Okay. All right.
Yeah. From the center.
Right.
But I was going to ask, why, because I wasn't here last year, why, what time would we close the pool last year?
Are you talking about time of the day, day of the week, or season?
It's a good question. So I think during, during the week.
Okay, so, sort of the, the objective, yeah, sometimes one pool closes earlier than the next, just depends on what the weather, it's like today, we probably have just Oriole and I'm guessing now.
But, yeah, I mean, Oriole, so last year it was open until what time during the week, provided the weather was good? Does she remember?
Nine?
This year it closes at seven, right?
Seven.
Seven. Why, and why did we decide to close it two hours earlier?
Because right now, we're doing lap swim from seven to nine. So, but that's something that can be tweaked again for next year.
Next year, yeah, I mean, I just, like I said, she was asking me some questions, and I just wanted to make sure, and that's what I thought.
She works late, does she go out there to lap swim, or she just goes there to lounge?
That's a good question. She's in phenomenal shape, so I don't know, maybe she lapswims. But I just wanted to clarify, I told her that I thought that's what it was, but I just wanted to wait until I talked to her.
Okay. Okay.
Equipment purchase, one more.
Yes, so, the Parks Department.
He's not doing those evaluations here, can't spend any more.
He wants, well, he wants to put just two Scag?
Scags.
Scag.
Cheetahs.
Cheetah riding lawnmowers.
On a couple of rest, I want to see what this.
Yeah, right. So in a capital budget, $50,000 was set aside for the replacement of a tri-deck mower. We evaluated our current one, it's in great shape, there's no need to replace it, but we have a greater need to replace two of the three smaller riding lawn mowers, and this is what we're suggesting. Keith went out, got some verbal quotes from some companies, and actually Russo Power Equipment and Martin Implement Sales came in at the same price, $9,791. However, Russo will give us credit of $2,500 for trading in the old ones. So we would like the board to approve the purchase of two Scag Cheetahs, if you want inch riding lawnmowers from Russo Power Equipment, in amount not to exceed $72,000, $1,000, excuse me, $70,000 and $82.
What do they look like?
What is it, are these the ones that stand up and you?
I'm just curious.
They won't know what it looks like.
No, they sit down.
Just like one of those.
Yeah, this is real turn, you sit down, it looks like a, like a chair, on top of a deck and a motor and bag, and it's got the two.
The name Scag Cheetahs.
So, yeah, that's.
I know, Russo's always worked with us before, been very good to us too, so, continue that.
So, that's the agenda now, we were going to take park tours, we're going to do Prairie View, Park, Pioneer, Austin, Mansfield, Palm Lane tonight. So Prairie View, I thought we would just walk around the building really quick, just in case if you've never seen some of the reaches inside here.
I know.
Park, we're just going to go to the north end, because we've seen the south end, we went to the pool, we need to do that, kind of been in the museum as well. So we'll go to Pioneer, Dinosaur Park, Austin, Mansfield, Palm Lane.
Oh, we all get that.
We're going in the white van.
Should we leave our stuff?
Not unless you want to come back in before we leave for this evening.
You'll come with me.
I will.
White van, is it going to pull up?
The white van.
Throw it in.
We're going to shove you in.
Do you ever hurt them again?
Right.